My name is Paul and this is some of the statistics from 2014. May I ask you a question about breast cancer? I'm calling to ask you a question for the administration committee. And you want to answer this? Or you want to answer this? And you want to answer this? Can I talk to you in English? Uh... No, I don't know. Yeah? I'll speak in Polish. Yeah? I'll speak in Polish. Yeah? American accent, sorry. Yeah? I'll speak in Polish. Yeah? I'll speak in the history. Yeah? City manager. Yeah? City attorney. Yeah? Thank you. Public health department. We fully recommend to citizens and parents to watch you. And also we do have one. The general item under the consideration of applications to laws and commissions. We do have additional applications to the G D A. The downtown authority. Of application to the sport jaffa and employees on fourth street. Next, for the comments and general items, this is important to me. And anyone that comments or likes our videos, please talk forward to the evening. And if you would like to comment. Good evening, mayor. Council members. On the Thursday, July 19th. Of fall by our screen as well as by apple. And we are the protesters for pink town pink. And if there comes any surprise to anyone, we are now at our seventh year. Of this wonderful event, which is to raise global awareness for good health, screen and cure. Are to then work hopefully to prevent the spread of cancer. Also for early detection. This year, we're very proud to say that again, we said we are seventh year. And that is a direct result of individuals from our community. Who helped put this off for us. It takes many, many hands to uh pull the event in altogether. So that we have created a C F O for our whole municipality. Not only is it with all of the businesses in our community have put their hands about this event. In support of, as well as the schools, the students, the members of the community. And let's not forget, of course, that this real reason why we are here. Is to honor those individuals who have gone through the very violent fight of trying to eat breast cancer. Many of those individuals have had their prostate result. Many individuals, well, to state the fact that uh many individuals spend their numbers trying us annually. So that we also have a moment to remember those who did fight very openly. This year, we asked you to turn up the pink as our spreadsheet saying. We have different types of screenshots, so you can see many of us. Uh, we are the crazy names and people with very proud to say that. Uh, but then we have a lot of other individuals who have helped us as well. Of all the peers that have just absolutely stumbled and were once with this event on the map. Uh, the biggest part of us is of members of our community who pulled together. And this has become an annual event and we're very, very proud of it. Uh, we want to all consider helping us turn up pink at this event as well. And we want to raise the global awareness. Uh, we will be held on Thursday, October 7th. At the west end of Willow Street. Right near the farm, but in a field where the boys assemble. Beginning will be from four to five. We will have a brief live on ceremony at approximately four forty-five. And then the pink living walk will begin at five p.m. properly. The walk is free, however, we are always most privileged to hear from all of us from the heart. Our voice absolutely wonderful about this too. Is that we are definitely partners with Washington Health Care Foundation. Every dollar raised through this event is our benefits portfolio of our school, which is improving the services to the community. This year, we encourage all the top labs and modules. And wish us to give a lot of the equipment is the best for any of the. And that's where all of the dollars have been brought for. For any contributions from the higher level was appreciated of them. There are also issues for various businesses who have opted to support this event through sponsorships. And uh once again, we would thank every member of the council. And mayor, as well as the city manager, city attorney and all those present. For everything that we do and we encourage everyone to come out and join us on October 2nd. Whether later shy because as one of the members uh at first, our first event was saying she is a survivor. We were saying, you know, in fact, with all our key, there is uh through the economy of our agenda. And we said, well, doing something breast cancer is easy. And so they're putting a perspective. So we can later shy and we will be out there and we encourage everybody to walk. Thank you very much for your kindness. Thank you. You guys do a wonderful job and we appreciate it. Thank you very much. Anyone else who wants to comment on tonight's agenda? So now move on to the concert agenda. All agenda items spoken to the outside block, the concert agenda is considered by the senior engineer routine arrows. How I can quickly consent agenda, any number of council may have an item from the consent agenda. We looked at taking up a new revenue portion of the meeting. Concert agenda items include: four more minutes, four more hero, one for girls. Notification that we next workshop. Consideration evil struggle back then. Consideration evil power. Pink town pink event. Consideration the evil fire happening for the foundation. In this motion, that does not function to action for the conservation. All the board have given hand for helping to get the agenda together. Thank you. I'm watching by council member for the support by council member who want to approve the consent agenda as presented. So any discussion? Tonight, please sit down. I'll speak in Polish. Yes, I'll speak in Polish. Yes. American. Yes. American accent, sorry. Yes. I'll speak in Polish. Yes. I'll speak in the history. Yes. I'll speak in Polish. Thank you. I appreciate business, we have no. New business. Consideration of applications to laws and commissions. Considering call presented action to advertise vacancy on the compensation commission. Downtown authority, health commission, district district commission. Now more or less transportation committee. Council notification commission. Fighting commission, or itself area of authority. All payments by the member subject to council's approval. Must otherwise specified or certain or limits. Nominations for council committees now require subject. After another council nominated individual for appointment. Council shall hold an announcement. When due date, there is replacement of the nominee is required for appointment. Following applications have been received. From the compensation commission, there were no applicants. Downtown authority, there's one vacancy and expires on day six thirty seventeen. An applicant must have an interest in privately located downtown district. This is a male appointment. If one applicant therefore of four is on fourth street. Please on the back, that he meets the qualifications and unmade job for which you feel about one thing to see on its time. Turn it in since there is something. So, I'm gonna speak right now. Your hands, you got me. I don't know what I'm talking to someone to follow. Can I ask you? Just go for it. I should offer. If I have to, you don't want to move. So, in fact. I will hear by council member next speed. Two point J F R O two downtown authority support by council member. You're just a girl, I'm a teenager. I'm sure you're a little bit. Thank you. Turn it in discussion. Tonight, can you please sit down? I'll speak in Polish. I'll speak in Polish. Yes. I'll speak in the history. Yes. American accent, sorry. Yes. I'll speak in Polish. Yes. American. Yes. I'll speak in Polish. Thank you. How about I say the two vacancies, one three year term ending ten thirty months of eighteen. And one on expired term ending ten thirty of eighteen. Since the council made it, we have one applicant who watches all of the about twenty nine first street. All of those who are part of the hospital community. All three of you, Charlie, Tom, and Michelle, can you turn the public before? Okay. Any discussion? Can you please sit down? American accent, sorry. Yes. I'll speak in Polish. Yes. I'll speak in the history. Yes. American. Yes. I'll speak in Polish. Yes. And council member. Yes. I'll speak in Polish. Thank you. District district commission. There were no applicants. Now more or less transportation committee. There were three unexpired traps, two terms adding three thirty one fifteen. One term adding three thirty of sixteen. Smell pregnant. Need two applicants Brian Denver of E. College Lane and Jones with all three three nine less spots for a road. From either point. Brian Denver with E. College Lane two one. Expired term adding three thirty one sixteen. If you want to. So, community discussion. And we will be having a lot of comments. To all. My family have left tomorrow night. And this is. I spoke. I'm watching by council member authorities support by council member good speed support. The nomination of Brian Denver with E. College Lane. Any discussion? Tonight, can you please sit down? American accent, sorry. Yes. I'll speak in Polish. Yes. I'll speak in Polish. Yes. I'll speak in the next speed. Yes. I'll speak in the history. Yes. American. Yes. I'll speak in Polish. Thank you. I'd like to appoint Dave Jones to the post three three nine less spots. Far road two uh a three year term adding three. The white term adding two three three thirty one fifteen. Or we will stop the news for a little while. Turn it in. Normal watch of pressure committee. Adding three three one. Possibly. Hello. I have a word. So, I was going. Yeah. I'm watching by council member good speed. But by council member would love to support the mayor's nomination. Two three eight Jones two three three nine less spots far road. Turning adding three one one fifteen. So any discussion? Tonight, can you please sit down? I'll speak in Polish. Yes. I'll speak in the history. Yes. I'll speak in Polish. Yes. American. Yes. I'll speak in next speed. Yes. American accent, sorry. Yes. I'll speak in Polish. Thank you. Community education commission, there were no applicants. Fighting commission, three vacancies. Three year terms adding three the ten thirty months of eighteen. And one on expired term adding ten thirty one sixteen. Applicants must be city residents. This is a male appointment. I'd like to appoint Brian of two eighty two White House at home. Two one year terms adding ten thirty months of eighteen. And that's you. On your. That look at the legend too. And you should have any. And permission. I don't agree. I'm watching by council member good speed support by council member authority. To support the mayor's nomination of. Muscati two each term adding ten thirty months of eighteen. By the commission. Any discussion? Tonight, can you please sit down? I'll speak in the history. Yes. I'll speak in Polish. Yes. American accent, sorry. Yes. I'll speak in the next speed. Yes. I'll speak in Polish. Yes. American. Yes. I'll speak in Polish. Thank you. Cause watching by Brian Mary of two thirty nine Houseway. South uh two one year terms adding ten thirty one seventeen. And I will show you more for now. Now I will talk about the current. Coming in for very much. Sure. I'm watching by council member would love support because my name is eight to support male pregnant of Mary Brian Mary. Two each term adding ten thirty months of eighteen. To the fighting commission. Any discussion? Tonight, can you please sit down? I'll speak in Polish. Yes. Yes. American accent, sorry. Yes. I'll speak in the history. Yes. American. Yes. I'll speak in the next speed. Yes. And council member would love. Yes. I'll speak in Polish. Thank you. I'd like to appoint Roger Arrow two twenty five seventh street. I clear term adding ten thirty one seventeen. And I will show you more of our water group. On a mission. And you. And work of ownership. Before. I'm watching by council member good speed support by neighborhood transera. For to find property owner to fight commission. Turning in ten thirty one seventeen. So any discussion? Tonight, can you please sit down? I'll speak in the next speed. Yes. American accent, sorry. Yes. I'll speak in Polish. Yes. I'll speak in the history. Yes. I'll speak in Polish. Yes. American. Yes. I'll speak in Polish. I say I'm looking by Mary now on the forty five first street to the one next by term adding ten thirty one sixteen. Or in connection to supporting relationships and arts. Term two. And we're going to. Of you. I'm watching by council member good speed support by council member authority. To support the mayor's decision to apply the I J V R. Two. The next by term adding ten thirty one sixteen. So any discussion? Tonight, can you please sit down? American accent, sorry. Yes. I'll speak in Polish. Yes. I'll speak in Polish. Yes. And I'll speak in the next speed. Yes. American. Yes. And council member history. Yes. I'll speak in Polish. Thank you. I say I am still feeling down in authority. There are two vacancies, unexpired traps adding six thirty thirteen to six thirty seventeen. Applicants must be city residents. This is a male appointment. I'd like to appoint perish larval ten forty five Maple Tree. All of the water to support the mayor's overall mayor's block of the financial. And all of the money. And you. Thank you. Sixty four association quarters. Subject. Also. I'm watching by council member good speed support by council member authority. To include the mayor's opinion of perish larval to the banks of our authority. Turning adding six thirty seventeen. Sorry. Any discussion? Tonight, can you please sit down? I'll speak in Polish. Yes. American. Yes. American accent, sorry. Yes. I'll speak in the next speed. Yes. I'll speak in Polish. Yes. I'll speak in Polish. Yes. I'll speak in Polish. Thank you. I put the dollars to apply to our awards and commissions. And a uh empty vacancies dot. Whatever it is. And in part, he wants to be made on water. Very much. Five hundred. Next, we're about to announce those communications and announcement. I would create a common use report for property agency organization of the department. Tonight, we'll have a conference law and some minimum and broader activities on the mayesty county committee information. Now responding questions. Good evening, mayor. Council members. Well, thank you for the opportunity to return without the assurance of my feeables for I have obtained. And that activities of the mayesty county community foundation. And here, I'll play up to provide just a brief overview of the foundation itself. And then we'll add into uh some of our recent work. When I am asked what a community foundation is. I often explain that it is exactly as the name suggests. That it has to do with the community. So not only people that are connected by their geography, by where we live. And they are also by our relationships. And by the fact that we look together, or it's more small together. Or all to, you know, different entities together as vehicles, as individuals. Um, and so on. Um. It was a foundation, which is simply a platform for growth. It's a privilege to play a role in this community of working with all different types of. Power groups and organizations and individuals and businesses. To help um innovate and develop a nation for the future. And. Um, community foundations are found in every state in the U S, even internationally. And the Midwest is blessed with more than other parts of the country. And collectively, there are over nine hundred and forty community foundations in the nation. They hold over twenty three billion dollars in community assets. And in Michigan alone, there are over two billion dollars in community assets that we help with community foundations. The mission of the mayesty county community foundation. Is to ensure quality of life and place in mayesty county today and for future generations. With it up by engaging, facilitating, and maximizing the impact of community loyalty. What we mean by that is doing the practice of helping to catalyze and raise resources for the community on behalf of the community. Well done, I love to board directors. And unfortunate to be guided by their leadership and strategic action. Um, we see that was here and I would complain about the George Taylor. Um, who is a lieutenant this evening, of course, for his membership on the foundation board. Um, we have diverse representation from all different sectors of our community. From all different geographic parts of our community. And truly, we are privileged to all benefit from their leadership. Um, in two thousand nine, all the directors decided to affiliate with the community foundation for Muskegon County. And rejoined the community foundations of Mason County and O'Shea County. Um, in that relationship. And Muskegon provides uh a restorative and a backup for support services. Um, also through that relationship, we've been able to collect lots of foundations pool our assets for investment purposes. And so a lot of our assets have fallen off the others and a pool of over one hundred and thirty million dollars. That really affords uh excellent opportunities for the most efficient of that portfolio. And other efficiencies that are in our life, all of us realized. Over the past year, uh we have experienced another year of almost for the community foundation. Uh, we've been originally receiving over seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in gifts and grants. Uh, we've likely established from a thirteen and eight funds at the foundation for a total of seventy five. Uh, our total assets go to about two point seven million dollars. Uh, at the same time, we awarded out almost eight hundred thousand dollars in each grants. And over thirty thousand dollars in scholarship awards. And last year, the two thousand thirteen investor returns twelve point three five percentage. Uh, internationally, a hundred and ninety miles are in one and seventy five different funds. And our highlight is some here that are of particular relevance to the city of mayesty. Um, and more also that are richest home wide. And um. The funds that are established are representative of a broad range of issues. Uh, whether it's maybe from arts and cultures to eastern education. The environment of some folks, some folks support specific nonprofit organizations. Others are go away as far as to help reach charitable goals of individuals, families and businesses. So um we hope to realize charitable goals for a wide variety of organizations and individuals. And some of the funds that we administer specifically uh for the benefit of city property. Uh, include the mayesty insurance reward health fund. And we've already got R T B hours for the city to put help rooms and adults to help. Find recent progress to that park and I know there are other ones that are in the works currently. Uh, we've also worked to develop the mayesty our more or less plan uh uh one and fifty five. Uh, this past year, some of us was helped to support only four accounts at the park. And I know we all hear wonderful uh comments about how likely that's being used and how much it's appreciated. Uh, the land theater preservation fund exists to provide a source for the ongoing maintenance and restoration. And it hits the path in ten pound parks. The folk theater restoration fund, I'd like to the reopening of folk theater last summer, as y'all know. And uh if you haven't heard the good news, they have had over forty thousand paid emissions today. So um, wonderful to see all that to be downtown and anyways, I've two very important ones for. Uh, it will always been. And then. The loss of the water fund helps to define our community. The mayesty art institute fund helps to support efforts of our organization to provide cultural opportunities for citizens. And listed here, I want to slip in the city area that we do pay ministry funds and support. Each of these small districts makes you know, equal access laws, council academy, mayesty catholic, etc. Um, and also associates scholarship funds across districts. And actually also for all of those districts in the home. So um, and please to see some people taking interest in the education of our students. And this past year, the don't schlaaf, the fund has established. And uh that fund helps to expand opportunities for area youth. Uh, in memory of don't schlaaf, a former guidance counselor coach. The teacher at mayesty area public schools. And this one, in particular, this past year helped to support swimming programs, scholarships. For um used to be able to pick swim lessons. Uh, to give a mention of a new program offered by mayesty area public schools for all the original. And to help spur your interest in science and technology and engineering and math. And also a theater class that was uh targeting you this past summer. So it's really been helping to provide some wonderful opportunities. Uh, also two thousand thirteen, there were early funds established. Uh, one to support the android operations of the old theater. Uh, to support scholarship at casimir academy. The vast ships and restaurants which supports efforts to restore the first uh paragological church in mayesty. Little Mary's hospitality house which supports their efforts on a monster. To provide services to the families of coming in permanently on children. Um, and their families. And a scholarship fund also in memory of don't schlaaf. Uh, the fund that supports the present community central in Okeo. Uh, other Okeo area funds that support the beaches, the parks and water shadows. And their lake water shadowing sun. Uh, the penny cup of East Lake fund which shows a lot of like the mayesty deskins memorial third funding house for yearly loss. Then to fund improvements to that. Had that special to uh the community of the upstate mayesty. And finally, watching the ski fund, which I'll talk about in just a moment. In a little more detail. As I mentioned there, it was also over uh seven hundred and ninety eight thousand dollars in grants that went out of the community foundation last year. And inside which before, we administer all different types of funds. Some of those are set up for a very specific purpose for their profit. So we're able to opt to support their own profit. Others are um, you know, teaching behaviors or community behaviors that support a wide variety of projects. Um, many of them are in the school stacks, the library, most part of the beneficiaries. Uh, we provide as a part of all parents' community at uh first rate mission operating and so on. Um, so just a few examples of um some of the projects we've been able to support with the help of our donors. Uh, we continue to convene the university council, which is comprised of high school representatives from each of the counties at school districts. That will start in the years tomorrow morning. Hope you follow to that very much. Uh, last year, they were really focused on providing opportunities and information to their peers about how they could continue their education at the high school. Whether it was to pursue a college degree, uh a trade school, a vocational certificate certification or other credential. Or some other um continue their education opportunity. It was going to be able to help along in their careers and their life at the high school. And they went through a very thorough process to work with that. Um, we helped us to um assist you on your path. And uh also continue to work with the schools to encourage your peers and provide them with information. And help them pathways to those steps. Large mayesty is a common by priority of the house. But convened by the foundation through the past couple of years. It's been known by everyone before names of mayesty county college access network. Um, but most recently, large mayesty. And this building gets about the same idea that um we know about this recent um recent research out there from Q foundation. Hearing that the gap between people who have earned a degree or have some quality credential after high school versus those that don't. The income gap is wider than ever. And so we're looking at as a community, how we can help support uh life priority. Looking at everything from early childhood education. Increasing the number of our children with an preschool program. And all the way up through college or secondary and ultimately career success. So we've been really fortunate to have good of community, community leaders. So, we've been really fortunate to have a group of community, community leaders behind this effort. Uh, with the support of a number of different orgies, and some of the prior contributions this past year, the effort they have made step forward, was able to hire a program coordinator, Mary Anne Bean. And, uh, the foundation is providing administrative and management support for this effort, because we feel it's critical to the success of our residents, to the success of children, and ultimately, to the general prosperity of the county. So, um, you'll be hearing wonderful commentary of some of your involvement, and we thank you for your involvement and leadership. Uh, but this will continue to be a priority for the community foundation, and a hope for our community moving forward. And ultimately, I want to, um, be here to acknowledge all of us, that, um, we know that, um, people during their lifetime are really generous, and we certainly see that in our community. Um, the statistics shows that around ten people give security in their lifetime. But we also know that only one out of ten people, or three out of ten people, and we know the statistic that we're looking at, just to make arrangements, leave it, leave a gift after the reward. And so, we encourage, um, in general, our community members to make those considerations. Uh, there are easy ways and complex ways that you can make that happen. But I want you to know that it is possible to leave a gift and support of virtually any charitable cause through the community foundation, and I will be privileged to be entrusted with, um, that gift and those wishes in the future. So, um, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions about activities or the work that we do. Thank you. If you are fond of the ideal part, foundation, thank you, for your contribution, you, person. Thanks very much.
Let's remind you, future of combatants. Season combat is an opportunity for citizens to combat unusual services, activities, or areas of city wall. Citizens are entitled to recognize the mayor for combatants, we can only take two five minutes. Our commitment to council will not be public, but is there anyone who wants to combat? Yes, sir, state your name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry. I want you to see the man who has got the tactical, energetic, goals. If you try to, if you're, if you're not special, watch. I like to, which, I'm gonna show you yours. You wanna do, maybe, so, like, to, without, don't, do, you, turn around.